Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco's Works Council Workshop Meeting on the January 8th, 2024. The council thanks you for being a part of our city government. At workshop meetings, the council discusses issues, but no formal action is taken. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. We also have some printed, I believe, in the back on that table as you enter. This meeting is also being televised live on PSC TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and is available via GoToWebinar. This and previous council meeting is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. So with that, Ms. Clerk, I will have you call roll and call the order.
Council members Blaisdell, Brahas, Gren, Harpster, Peralas, Mayor Proten Milney, and Mayor Serrano.
I am here, and if you'll all please stand with me and do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So with that, do we have any verbal reports from council members? Ms. Blaisdell.
Today, quite a few of us attended Pasco Chamber. The City of Pasco Police Department was the keynote speaker. What else am I missing, guys? They did a really good job. We're doing a business watch meeting for the three different districts, so those will be available if you live in those districts to attend. Oh, and also the city manager attended, and Chief Rosky, and there was a handful of other city employees. And Rachel was also there.
Thank you, council member Blaisdell, Mr. Harpster.
Yeah, just to add to that, I attended the same luncheon. One thing that I thought was good to note was our police department is very focused on community policing. And one of the points that Lieutenant Decker made was there's some people that officers come in contact with that jail is not the answer for, but you know, another option may be. And in Tri-Cities and in Pasco, we have those options. And the officers and department are really working to get people united with those options that are going to best help them when jail isn't the best option for them. So just thought it was a great presentation. The two of them are really good public speakers, certainly better than myself, and yeah, job well done.
Thank you, Mr. Harpster. Seeing no additional microphones, I have nothing to report as well, so we'll move on to item five, items for discussion. And the first item, item A, is the water rights acquisition. That's going to come from interim director Ms. Sarah. Now, I will note that this has been publicly announced, and we have sought input. We'll make the exception to the no comments during public workshop, and we'll allot two minutes per public comment. I don't believe, Mr. Lincoln, we have anyone signed up online to comment. If it takes you a couple of minutes to check, don't worry.
We'll make sure. One thing I would ask, though, is if we could do the presentation prior to the public comment.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I'm going to go Ms. Sarah, but I just wanted to call out that we will offer two minutes, up to two minutes of public comment after she's completed, and we'll roll into council questions and public comment. Thank you, Ms. Sarah.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I will provide a presentation that is very similar to the one that our previous director provided to you, has just some added information. And of course, if you have any questions, you can just ask as I'm going, or you can wait until the end. Anything works. The idea is to share with you as much information as possible, so you have clear understanding of the changes that have taken place. And with that, there are three types of water rights. There's portable water right, which for City of Pasco allows for surface withdrawals, water coming from the Columbia River. Irrigation water, which is a combination of Columbia River water, so surface withdrawal, and well withdrawals, including the area of the 50814, which is a specific area within City of Pasco where specific wells are determined to be this kind of water right. And then finally, there is the PWRF irrigation water. PWRF is our industrial facility, and this has a land application system. The well water is used to supplement the irrigation water that we utilize for the disposal of wastewater treatment. The industrial wastewater. Okay, so diving into each of these kinds, the first kind that I mentioned was the portable, which we're also calling municipal in this case, water right. Portable water comes from the Columbia River. There is available 18,883 acre feet per year, available for withdrawal in our rights. The 2022 usage was 15,873, and this 18,000 available includes the least 10,000 acre feet that we have from the Department of Ecology. So as you can see, there is a little surplus, in this case, for portable usage. And I will move on to next slide, and then we'll do some... Sorry, that was very loud. In this next slide, all I'm trying to show you, we don't need to go into the details of every number in the table. It's just trying to show you how we track the usage against each of those certificates for water rights, and these are the portable ones. And you can see in blue indicated those that are the ecology leases for water rights which are being used. Okay, next comes irrigation. And as I mentioned before, it's a combination of groundwater and Columbia River withdrawals through wells and intake facilities. And there is available 8,660 acre feet per year to be withdrawn. And there is a breakdown of where those are coming from, but all we want to really highlight in this slide is the 2022 usage, which was 10,490 acre feet, which, as you can see, is surpassing the amount that is available to us. And that is possible because through a lot of work, we were able to transform those rights to be able to be almost interchangeable with our municipal rights, the portable rights. Therefore, we are able to kind of balance that use between the two, irrigation and portable. And again, we have the tables that show how we're tracking that usage. Updated tables are being prepared with meter readings as of the end of 2023. So soon we'll have a similar table to this, but with 2023 usage. And again, this is the remainder of the irrigation rights. There's plenty of certificates, and we track all of those. Okay, so if we do a summary of both portable and irrigation, we are seeing that there was a surplus in portable, about 3,000 acre feet not used. And then in the irrigation, we overuse about just under 2,000. So what we are seeing here is the remainder, the real balance in water rights. It's about 1,180 acre feet. And this number in red on the side of the screen is the number that I wanted to remember, so that we can then see what that means in number of units we can serve. We'll get to that math in just a little bit. Okay. And just to provide you a full picture, PWRF irrigation water rights are shown here. There's about 8,000 acre feet. The usage is only 4,450 in 2022. These water rights are not consolidated with the remainder of the water rights. There are some steps that need to occur, and we are not sure this is going to occur. So for the time being, we're not considering those as part of our balance, right? They're separate. Okay, and again, we're tracking that usage from each of those wells. Okay, so as you all know, the municipal code includes reference to water rights and has historically include reference to water rights in two locations. First, it is in the Water and Sewer Chapter, where it refers to water rights related to water being extended beyond city limits, and then subdivision regulations, where water rights must be assigned to subdivisions of land. Okay, and then again, water rights, determination of market value for those are required to be updated periodically, but not less frequently than every five years. Last time we updated those was in 2014. Okay, now, what were the historical practices? Well, there was a tendency to see the payment for water rights in lieu of transferring those water rights. Existing water rights were likely, or usually, transferred to other properties or banked for use in other properties later. And those water rights that were stripped off the land were then sold at market rate. Okay, in November, there were changes adopted to the PMC. And those included the following items. Water rights apply now to all developments, including commercial developments, and that is large industrial users, food processors, schools, any development. And the assessment of water rights was related to the usage of the water and not the extension of a water line. Really, anytime we're providing water to a development, we need to back that supply with a water right. That makes it match. Okay, so the adopted changes to the municipal code make the water rights regulations apply to within and beyond city limits, increase the market rate established at 4150 per acre foot, which encourages the transfer versus the payment in lieu, since there is no difference with market value. And then there is a 50% surcharge to those properties which had their rights removed within the last 10 years. And this does two things. It accounts for future value increases of their water rights, since water rights are scarce resource that the city needs to seek and acquire, and also incentivizes the transfer. It really discourages the stripping of those water rights off the land. Okay, communication. So the city staff has brought this change to municipal code to a council workshop in early October. Later, there was a developer meeting, or a meeting with developers, in mid to late October of 2023. And finally, there was a council meeting in which action was taken in November. Since we've had a discussion on water rights in prior council meeting, and from that, there were handouts distributed and media outreach, including all the things that are listed, from interviews in the radio to social media posts encouraging comments from the community on this subject. And what you're seeing is just a portion of our handout, our information provided. Okay, so water rights fees currently in the code are established as in lieu fees at the price of $4,150 per acre foot as of the end of November of last year. And this is those that are not transferring their water rights, should pay the in lieu fee. If developer is providing their water rights to the city, there is no fee. Okay. And so how are the fees calculated on a development? Well, it begins with irrigation water is calculated as half the area of the parcel is considered irrigable. And then we applied a three and a half acre foot per that surface, right? So that is what is estimated to take to grow vegetation in that half of the acre, because the other half is being used with impervious surfaces, right? Houses, driveways, other things that do not require irrigation. And then portable water, we have an estimated average amount of usage in each residential unit of .3 acre feet. And then, of course, there is a transfer fee. So that's how the calculation is done anytime a developer applies to a developed property, and those fees are assessed. Okay, and we received some feedback on needing to show a little bit better how that calculation is done. So we have one very tangible example, and this is just one of the potential examples out there. But say we have a one-acre site in which four units are developed, and we are assuming that there is no loss in right-of-way area, right? So to make the numbers be rank numbers, we're saying we have four lots, a quarter-acre lot that we are trying to serve. There's four of those. So per lot, we need, half of that lot is going to need irrigation. And if when we applied the rate, as we explained before, is half of that quarter-acre lot receives irrigation at a rate of 3.5 acre feet, that's what the demand is going to be, ultimately resulting in a demand for water rights of .4375 acre feet per unit, and that is for irrigation purposes only. And then we add to that the portable water, which is again calculated per unit at .3 acre feet per unit. So when we add those two, the total demand for a single parcel, quarter-acre parcel, is .7375 acre feet, just under one, right? It's three quarters of an acre feet, just under. Okay, so if we multiply that number by four, for the four lots that are being developed, the total demand is 2.95, just under six, for one acre site that has four lots. Okay, with that, if we apply the rate, sorry, not rate, the fee for water rights, it comes up to be $12,242. That is the total fee assessed for those four lots. Okay, and there was a lot of math there, but tried to walk you through it. So if you need a minute to look at it, or you want me to keep on going and then come back, that's good. Okay, I'm going to keep on going. Okay, so because we are seeing different kinds of development, it was good to evaluate what the difference between different size of parcels was when it came to water rights. So the first example is the one that we talked before, which is four units in quarter-acre lots require 2.95 acre feet per acre. And if you remember that red number that we talked about before, the remaining available water rights, available for usage in new development. So there was 1,180. Well, how many units can we serve with that remaining available? Okay, the math is right there. There is 1,600 units can be served if all those units were quarter-acre lots. Now, we're seeing more dense development, which has a higher impact in portable demand, because the portable demand is a flat allocation, it's an average, but lower on the irrigation. So ultimately, if we had, say, 11 units per acre, which is close to what we're seeing, we're actually seeing a little higher densities, a trend towards higher density. So maybe 14 units per acre, but we did the math with 11. So 11 units per acre, it ends up being a demand on that one acre that has 11 units, 5.1 acre feet per acre. And so with that demand, how many units could we serve? Okay, we can serve more than with quarter-acre acres, or quarter-acre lots, in that order. And so this comes out to 2,500 units, that's 2,545. So that is what is available to be served. Okay, and two examples, so we have a little bit of sensitivity analysis on what is remaining currently today, available to us. So number of units needed in 20 years is about 23,000 units, which is more than what we can currently serve. Okay. And so if we transform that number of units into acre feet needed of water rights, and we're using the 11 units per acre assumption, because that is the trend we're seeing, that higher density, we would need 10,794 acre feet. It's about 10 times what we have available today. Okay, and so let's see the impacts of the increased rate. So what a developer would see as increase in rate, if they had been planning to pay in lieu fee before, and now they're seeing a new rate, is in a quarter, in a four units of quarter-acre lots, it would be a total of $1,794 per unit. So 1,700, almost 1,800 per unit. If there was 11 units per acre, the impact that delta between what the fee was before and what the fee is now is 1,100, and I'm rounding, but we're all seeing the screen. Okay, so the cost for right-of-way acquisition is a real cost that somebody will bear. So if developers are not paying the increased fee, what it means is the overall customer base for the utility will be paying that cost of water right acquisition through their rates. And to put that in perspective, the numbers we have shown is the increase in water fees, sorry, water rates for all ratepayers could be in the order of $4 per month for each million dollars spent. And that is for purchase of water rights. And to give you an example, we recently evaluated an offer, or provided an offer, for acquisition of 2,000, just over 2,000 acre feet at a discounted rate under the market value that we have established, $3,800. And that would represent a cost in our utility of $8,000,003, $8,000,003 million. And this is just for context, is to show you how this could work. Okay, and we did hear there were some concerns with legal process. So for that, I'm going to ask Mr. Ferguson to fill us in. Have we followed the legal requirements for the change in the code?
So the question is, did Pasco follow all legal requirements for the code change? The answer to that is yes. So essentially, what took place, as you saw before, the process that we went through with regard to the workshop and then the follow-up meeting with the developers, and then the subsequent code change was on for a special meeting. There was some concern by some folks that somehow that wasn't something that could be allowed to be on a special meeting, and there's nothing statutory that prohibits that. There are some statutes that prohibit special meetings. For example, franchises can't be adopted at special meetings, they have to be at regular meetings. There's no such statutory requirement for this particular situation. This is a simple code change. It's not a development regulation that would require any kind of public hearing process. It's not some kind of rate change that would require multiple public hearings or public outreach or something like that. All the public outreach that's gone on for an ordinance is definitely above and beyond what would normally go on for any kind of other, just basic code change. Some language was changed in PMC 13, Title 13, as well as the rate section in 335. So yeah, happy to answer any questions, but there's no additional requirements that we're aware of that would have been required for this particular code change.
And with that, that is what we have prepared for our presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions or go back to any slide. I know there was a lot of information, a lot of math in all of those slides, so I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, interim director. I've got some questions, but all of them. Looks like council member Brahas.
Thank you. Just one question for clarification. I know there's been a lot of information out there, especially on social media. There's been information and misinformation. Could you explain, or could you clarify, how this affects current homeowners?
I can do that. So current homeowners are not impacted by the new fee for water rights. The only impact they may see is having to cover for that delta in cost when water rights increase. Therefore, you know, development paying for development. If that doesn't occur, then ratepayers are paying for that cost for the acquisition of water rights that are needed for the overall system beyond the existing demand which they're part of.
Just a follow-up, thank you again for that clarification. I know there's a lot of questions, and I'm pretty sure we're going to hear a lot of comments in regard to that fear of what's it going to cost me? Is it going to raise my current fees? And so again, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Peralas.
Appreciate it. I actually have quite a few questions, but I can always kind of stop and then let other people talk. So one thing I want to address is, I think legally, it coming up at a workshop, like we talked about the water rights, you know, I think that all meets the letter of the law, but I think this should have been multiple meetings. I think developers and builders should have been properly addressed. And I think that could easily be done if you were... A lot of people come in and fill out permit applications, they submit it to the city, or land use applications. You know, we get their information, we put it on a list serve. And so when we have changes to codes, we can send out an email like, hey, this is coming up. We're looking into changing this, and then we can get their input. And then from there, we can reassess codes and changes. And so I would like to see the staff bounce it off of people who are going to be absorbing those costs, and then those changes come to us, because, I mean, this was essentially brought to the city council. I remember in the meeting, Mr. Royley gave his presentation, and then he looked to his left and said, did we do it right? Did we get things wrong? Do we have any questions? And there really wasn't a whole lot of debate about it. I would have liked to see it bounced off the development community prior to coming to the city council. That's my perspective as a city councilman. So it may have met, you know, all those thresholds. We didn't have to have hearings, but I feel like we probably could have had a lot more debate about it rather than it coming back here now. So that's one of them. I think the numbers, the math is mathing to me. That's why I was asking for the formulas and stuff. But right now, there is a surplus, so we have a deficit in the irrigation. So I guess my first question would have been, why do we have a deficit in the irrigation? And it's probably because we haven't changed this since 2014. It wasn't addressed for a very long time. So we're essentially having to play catch-up. But even with that said, we still had a surplus, so we're actually still looking pretty good. And I know we discussed that with the water treatment plant, we get a credit because we're dumping, you know, water in there, but we're cleaning it and stuff like that. So I don't know, I would just, maybe it's conservatively thinking, but if we didn't do anything at all, we didn't charge anyone at all, I'm not saying there could be a possibility, there probably could be that we just continue, if we didn't change the fee, that we just kind of have a surplus, and we kind of just kick the can down the road. But eventually, with, you know, having to build 21,000 to 23,000 homes, you know, the chickens will come on the roost eventually, right? So I understand that. But now that we are addressing the fee, I think the fee is fair. You know, with the current market, you know, it could be probably a little lower, but again, that's why I feel like we could talk to the building community, because I do feel like the developers are going to have to absorb the cost in the cost of housing some way, and it may be moot, but we don't know that, you know? The study that was done by our consultant, which a lot of us haven't even seen, you know, maybe it talked about that in there, I don't know. So I would like to see that, but the way I look at it is right now, these are a couple of things that I believe can be sticking points or perhaps change. So I think the fee is fair, 4150. A lot of building developers said that's fine, it probably shouldn't have been changed a long time ago. So I think the fee is fair, forty-one fifty, a lot of building developers said that's fine, it probably shouldn't have been changed a long time ago. Um to kind of keep it with the market rate, so I I'm I'm cool with that, I I sent this email. To Mayor Pete, just to let him know this, these were my thoughts after thinking about this and meeting with, talking with developers and with city staff. Um, I don't think we should have the ten-year, I look at as a punishment fee. Um, because like I said, we still have that surplus, and if we're putting this fee out there now, and we can, we're able to buy water rights, well then we're always gonna have that surplus. That's just my take on it, um you know, if we can um not have all these costs on developers and developers during this housing crunch, I think that's a good thing. I think that's a kind of a uh immediate, you know, middle-of-the-road approach, um so that's what I would suggest, we don't have this ten-year. Um within ten years fee of surcharge, this fifty percent surcharge, but if we had to do it, I feel like there should be somewhat of an escalator. So maybe start at thirty, then go up to thirty-five, forty, forty-five, and then eventually just peters off. Because then I would like to see that this gets done every five years so that we stay in um up to the current market rates, we didn't do that. So should we take it out on the building community because we didn't do that? I mean, all the people probably in city staff haven't been during that time, you know, we've had a lot of people come and go, so you know, it's, I would say. You know, sorry, city, I mean, the community and the builders, because we didn't address this during this time, but we're doing it now, but again, this is just my perspective. Um, and I think we need to start allowing zero escaping, if a lot of builders and developers come here and say, it's a hassle, um we're not able to do it fully. Because in our code right there, it says that fifty percent of our lots are supposed to be landscaped, I think we need to start changing that, which leads me into. We need to start talking about water conservation, which we're not really doing, but if we do stuff like zero escaping, allow people to do that. We don't have to use a lot of water, again, what's being used the most, irrigation. We have a deficit with irrigation, and I know that we've also talked about, there's places across the city that are using potable water, we shouldn't be using potable water for irrigation. So um and also, again, I think I already addressed the, I think any city uh policy change needs to be. Assessed and and talked with developers and builders, whoever, I mean, this could go for anything, get the feedback, come with us, let's have meetings, let's have a robust discussion. So we don't have people come in here and having to line out the door saying, I don't like this change, um because it is a sticker shock, you look at the numbers. Um, and I think that was the last thing I had, but I wanted to, for you to tell me, how much would that cost for that example development? Based on our fee, how much does that cost for that development? Are you taking eleven hundred eighty times forty-one fifty, and that equals? What we would, or someone, the developer would have to pay? For the fee?
The calculation is on, sorry, that was really loud, four acres, uh sorry, one acre, quarter acre fee. So it's two ninety-five times the forty, forty-one fifty, that's that's the twelve thousand. And then one thousand one hundred and eighty is available water rights, which we divided upon the demand. Calculated for different examples, which I can go to.
But for your example, that's if like that four units an acre, if we develop that all, if someone came in and said, we're building six hundred units. How much would that development cost, or how much would this fee cost, that development? Is that what you would take eleven eighty times four one fifty, right?
That's right.
Okay, I think it's like one point nine million or something like that?
One thousand one hundred and eighty times forty-one fifty is four million eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand.
So that's how much that would cost, okay, so like I said, the math works, but like, that just gives you perspective, someone wanted to bring in six hundred units. You know, and obviously the lower, the bottom one would be less amount of money, if you look at it, because you're building more, so it just provides perspective, so. I don't know how many, what developments we're really doing at four units acre, eleven units an acre, or fourteen, but either way is, is a lot of money, so. Again, those are uh my questions and comments, I think we should at least talk about some of them, um if we're gonna make changes. Or we can always come back another time, but I think there's a lot of things that we can change and kind of, again, middle-of-the-road, so. I'm willing to be challenged on anything I said, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Prowls, Mister Harps.
Yeah, thank you, Miss Sarah, for the presentation, especially in kind of last minute with Mister Worley's departure. Um, uh thanks especially for the references to the PMC that guide this, uh I think that's helpful for stakeholders to understand. Um what governs it and the why behind uh these changes. Um, and then also wanted to thank staff for the words I was gonna use, Mister Ferguson's, above and beyond uh communication to the community. Um, starting with that meeting back in uh late October and then continued for the last couple of months and throughout the holiday season. Um, another point I'll make is, you know, Mister Worley gave that presentation beginning of October. Two or three people reached out initially about, hey, I didn't know about this, and very promptly, if I remember right, a meeting was scheduled with the development community. And um, I don't think we would see that in a lot of other jurisdictions, um nor the continued follow-up for the last few months, so just wanna make that point. Um, one question that I had was, I was interested in what the results were of the online comments, if any were received, and what kind of the. If there was an overall theme, how many comments we received, you have that information, just curious what your take was on that?
I do not have that answer for you, but I can certainly check with our communications team and share with you.
Yeah, thanks, um. I also appreciate having the information for eleven units per acre, previous presentation was four units per acre, we're really not seeing that in city limits um at all anymore. Um, one clarification I didn't see there was, I just wanna confirm that these changes. Um that are applicable now don't apply to projects currently in work, is that correct, or residential projects or?
Correct, the fees are for those um developments that are already underway. Are going to remain at the old established rate or fee, sorry, fee.
And thanks for that uh confirmation, and to that point, you know, the uh the city does have the legal right to. Uh increase these types of fees um at any given time during any stage of a project, and a certain project is not vested under the old fees. Um, and so, you know, even to make the uh um, better another word, that the uh. Sorry, I'm drawing a blank, make the exception um for projects currently in work is, again, above and beyond what um is is strictly going by the code, you know. Um, and then last point, we may have a surplus now, um but it is important to prepare for the future. And um, you know, that future growth that we've all talked about for a long time and um ensure a a certain quality of life for future residents, so thank you.
Thank you, Mister Harps, um I see no additional lights on, uh except Miss Sarah's, is that a remaining on? Um, I'll give kind of my two cents and I'll open this up to the public, uh again, noting that we have two minutes per comment tonight. Um, in first, we've got four units and eleven units, uh what is, what is like our average of what we're seeing built in the city right now?
So currently, we're seeing a trend towards higher density, so that eleven units could be a good average, we've seen higher than that, fourteen. Units per acre, more recently, historically, uh quarter acre lots were predominant.
Right, and that's, that's why I kind of wanted to try to draw the line of not what was in twenty-fourteen, but what we're seeing in twenty-twenty-four. Um, you know. We absolutely need to make sure that the city is covered in water rights, I have a concern if we're going to ask uh. I have a concern if we're gonna ask the public to pay for ongoing building at four dollars per month. Um, you know, we've talked about various fees and right and and other issues, whether it's uh. This particular fee or anything else, you know, trying to keep those down and do a minimum, uh any increases that are required. So I have a lot of heartburn if that's where we have to land to pass it on to the public. Um, that said, I don't know what the exact right side is, right size is, and and you've given us a calculation that's certainly helpful. Admittedly, I don't know that I followed every single thing, especially when you're talking about one acre, and then you multiply it by point two and point three and times fifty percent, I. I get that, I appreciate what Mister Prowls has said about encouraging zero escaping and other alternative uh less water use, less water consumption where possible. Um, one thing that, I mean, I think we need to circle back to where we are, we adopted. We made a decision, we adopted an ordinance and we're with it, and it, the only thing that we can do, and I wanna give this before we o-offer it to. Well, I got Councilman Prowls and then I'll give it to the public. Um, what we're looking at is, we've changed this already, and uh I'm guessing that at this point, if staff. Wants to do anything else with it, it's gonna have to come from the direction of council, so we'll have to. Either tonight or in the future, provide you a direction to modify the new cost and the new ordinance in some mechanism, so I want the public to hear that. This action's been taken, it was taken last year at the end of the year, to modify what's been done, it's going to take. You know, additional action, and it won't come tonight, be clear about that. What you can give counselor, uh staff direction as to what we could do. Um, but we're not going to see a decision on the fly to modify this, if any. Uh so I'll kick it to Mister Prowls and then uh open it up for public comment.
Yeah, I'll just add, like, you know, again, we've, we have a surplus with the, with the old current, with the old fee of seventy twenty-five, and we still had a surplus with all the growth that we've seen. So I'm just saying, I I think, again, forty-one fifty would be sufficient to go forward, and that's what we would charge, and you know. Unless we just see a boom and we're not able to acquire those rights, that's one thing, but then in the day, if we don't have ability to to get those rights, then we just wouldn't develop. So I mean, there's also that, you know, we don't have to develop if we don't have the rights, so. Again, I just think there needs to be middle-of-the-road approach to many of these things, and and again, we need ver-verifiable, you know, results. If zero escaping is gonna be allowed fully, and you know, we need to see it in developments, um we need to be talking openly about water con-conservation, because like I said. We're wasting water currently, the way we're going about it, so um again, those are my two cents, but I I mean, I really do feel like we need to um. Make make some decisions about what we're gonna do going forward, um it can be, you know, where we all send, submit kind of things that we would like to see done. Um, but I mean, this needs to be changed sooner rather than later, or at least some concessions made, I believe. Um, but like I said, I'm willing to hear any pushback on anything, but you know, um I would hate to see this get kicked down the road, months and months, and then. You know, this is the role we live in, and we're charging people fifty percent surcharges and stuff like that, so.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add that zero escaping is allowed under the code, though it's not an incentive, so that would need to be a conversation for, from the policy board on whether or not there should be an incentivization for doing zero escaping.
Incentive meaning?
If you want to provide a financial incentive for folks to do zero escaping. It's not an uncommon practice in places with declining aquifers to provide some sort of financial benefit to developers or even residential units who decide to transition to to zero escaping. But it is allowed, you can zero escape your lawn if you'd like to.
But we could just allow it to happen either way, we don't need to provide an incentive, right?
I- i- it's allowed now, if you want to do zero escaping, you're you're allowed to, the code allows for it.
Then then why do we have developers come in and say, you know, I'm having a hard time getting zero escaping done, that's what I mean by verifiable result of it being done, you know, I mean, I just. I'm just going off of what I've heard developers come in and say, um so I'm just.
Thank you, and and maybe we can just uh have further follow-up on that, Mister Lincoln, of of if we're seeing heartburn within planning or other departments. Let us know, and if there's something that we need to do to kind of remind that it's an encouraged practice, not just an allowable one, that might be helpful. So with that, I'll open to the public, um if you have comments, uh we're gonna leave it in two minutes tonight. Um, if anyone has a comment, come on up. And we'll do the traditional name and address for the record, thank you.
Uh Charles Laird, two seven one six, Road sixty-four in Pasco. Um, I'd like to echo Councilman Prowls's comments on the uh the surcharge. I think the surcharge is unreasonable, um particularly for someone who possibly transferred their rights. Within the last ten years to be um charged a. An impact fee on today's value when the value was significantly less back then, just seems a little unfair. Um, the second comment I have is that um this analysis is heavily weighted towards residential, and I don't see a similar. Use analysis for commercial industrial developments, so for example. Um, most commercial industrial developments don't require a half acre worth of landscaping, and so. Are these fees going to be applied uh for developments of that nature uh in the same manner as they are on the residential site? It's a question I have, and if that's not addressed in the code, it should be. Thanks.
Thank you, um I see Miss Sarah writing, do you have any uh comment on that, whether or not there's a distinction, Miss Sarah?
So the examples provided were indeed of residential, uh residential happened to have a more. Uniform pattern of development where this math uh appears to make more sense for context. Now, commercial industrial development, uh the assessment of what rights needed is based on projections of demand. Um, and so it's a little bit different, and there was no good way to show math because there is no kind of pattern to it. So it was hard to explain it in a. Universal way as uh residential really landed itself for.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Any further pri-public comments?
Eric Weinheimer, I'm a realtor, I live at twenty-two twenty S L I Road, Sunnyside, Washington. I guess I have one quick question, how many acre feet of the water city currently has is leased and how much is owned? Does anybody know that answer?
Yes, I can go, sorry, can I do that? I'm so sorry, I'm just clicking away. Okay, so the leased water rights currently are just limited to the ten thousand. Acre fee that we showed here at the very beginning, so those ten thousand acre feet from ecology are leased, the other ones are own. So if we do just some quick math, it's eighteen thousand, almost nineteen plus another eight thousand. But here, and ten of those are um leased, so round number sixteen thousand are own, ten thousand are leased.
So basically about forty percent of them are leased water rights. Okay, I guess one thing I would caution the city about, I deal in water rights, I sell water rights from time to time, but. This water's not gonna get any cheaper, and the competition for it becomes greater and greater every day. This is something that needs to be addressed immediately in a way that looks at it from a long-term basis. And I really think the surcharge and the way the city is approaching this is probably not the best way, because. You have a study that says it's worth forty-one fifty an acre foot, but realistically, what you have done now, the city by passing this ordinance. You've set the water value between forty-one fifty and a hundred and fifty percent of that, you've got a water right owner right now that's not gonna sell for less than forty-one fifty. Because he knows he can go to the city and, or somebody's gonna pay him the forty-one fifty, you've got a developer on the other end that's looking at it saying, well. Rather than me going and paying the city a hundred and fifty percent of that amount, I'll simply go buy the water rights elsewhere and bring them. So you've set the value of the water right somewhere between those two numbers in the way you've set up the ordinance at this point. Another question, um if somebody has moved water rights away from the piece of property, they go ahead and they go for the plat. And they're told that they need X amount of water rights, they don't have them, are they allowed to go buy the water rights and bring them at that point, or are they still stuck with the hundred and fifty percent?
If transfer of wire, if transfer of water rights is done to the city. I don't believe the uh surcharge applies, nor the fee at all, because the transfer is occurring. The ultimate intent is to have the water rights transferred, to cover the demands of those developments that are happening.
So my understanding then is that if they've been transferred away, then they're transferred back, there wouldn't be the hundred and fifty percent surcharge?
That's correct, there is no surcharge, because there is no fee as long as the transfer is occurring.
Okay, I guess the last comment I would make, this is an extremely important issue to the city. And everybody that lives within the city, and I really think that you need to appoint a committee that has all the stakeholders represented. Go through this and make sure that this is a good decision for long-term planning for the city of Pasco. This is way too important, and you can see just that one development, the cost is gonna be four million dollars for the water. This is way too important and you can see just that one development, the cost is gonna be four million dollars for the water. And I guess another question I've got is.
Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, cut you, I, I, we went double.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, no, no, and I apologize, but, uh, if you do have additional questions, please write them down and send them over to us, send them over to the staff.
Okay.
I do appreciate the input because this is, to your point, very critical, future and present issue.
Okay, quick enough, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and give a third and final call cuz we've given two already, so if we have additional comments, uh. Seeing none, we'll move on from this item.
Mister.
Yeah.
May I?
No, no, absolutely, I mean, I know some mics didn't get hot up here, so.
No, it was mine, so this is a brand-new topic for me, I will admit, um, way out of my expertise and. Um, still way out of my expertise and so I took it upon myself and met with staff and I. Met with some developers and really just tried to understand this as much as I possibly can and. Um, just, just a few things from those meetings, if I can say, first of all, Daryl Olson. The gentleman that, that put this, um, market rate together, both staff and. The, the community at large agreed that he is probably an expert on this issue and he is probably the go-to guy. But, um, at least it was the, um, development community felt that, you know, at least the way the. The assessment read was really kind of hard to understand and to follow. Um, another thing that really both the, the staff and the development community agreed upon. We need water, you guys, this is, I mean, you know, you look at the Klamath Basin, you look at the, the southwest part of the United States. As it was just brought up, this is super, super important to get right, and if we wanna keep growing as a city, we have to have water. And, um, so I, it's, you know, the, the development community realizes that too, I think, just as much as the city, if they, if they wanna be able to develop, you know. Almost the word moratorium was used up here, if there is no water, I mean, I don't think that does really anybody any good, so I think everybody's aware of that. You know, one of the alternatives, you know, the fee, I, some of what I heard about the fee was that, um. You know, having it be retroactive like that perhaps wasn't fair, if somebody moved water rights off of their property eight years ago, not knowing this was coming down the road. I think the example I heard was likened and it may not be a fair equivalency, but I see where they're coming from, they felt that maybe it was. Like getting a speeding ticket on a, on a road after the speed limit was changed and was being told no, but that's what the speed limit used to be and so. You know, that's, I don't think that transfers directly, but I, but I see where they're coming from because it, you know, was in the past. Um, I think, you know, one of the alternatives, cuz one of the questions, one of the hard questions I asked, you know, because of the importance of the city to maintain waters. Okay, if not the fee, what do we do as a city to make sure we have enough water and one of the. Items that was brought up, I kind of heard it talked about a little bit, was talking about leasing, you know. Um, so, somebody who maybe wants more for their water and wanna hold on to it, maybe it is something the city leases for ten years. But then has an option to lease to own after that, to eventually acquire those water rights instead of some of the fees there. Um, you know, I heard that, you know, they would really just like to see a meaningful meeting of the stakeholders to come up with an equitable situation. Um, you know, and I don't know if it looks like a committee or some type of meeting, and I know there was a meeting before, but. Um, I thank, um, Councilmember Paralas for doing some time, the total time that was spent on this, um, the original workshop and the council meeting was. You know, thirteen minutes a meeting and, you know, I think this is something that we do need to do a deep dive in and. You know, l- let people really try to, try to grasp this as much as possible. Um, you know, I just, from some of the discussion I heard tonight, one of the questions I proposed just here typing was, aren't the ratepayers gonna pay more? If we raise the price or actually it already was raised that much, you know, it seems like they're gonna end up paying more, whether it's from the developers having to. You know, raise their rates cuz they're paying more or, you know, just from the usage, so it sounds like the ratepayers are gonna probably end up paying more. Either way, so yeah, this is just a kind of, I don't mean to complicate this even more, but you know, this is really, really a. An important issue that I think we do need to look at a little bit further and. Um, I guess if anything, the one other thing I heard just in my notes is, you know, if there is gonna be a surcharge. You know, shouldn't it be based on, um, the old rate rather than the new rate that they actually paid, and I'm not saying that that's the case either, but. I think, you know, these are all the things that we should consider and we should look at, this is, you know, as, as was shared from, from the podium there, this is really real important for us to get right, so. I look forward to continuing this discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Um, so again, I just, uh, sure.
Good evening, my name's Alan Oberding, I, uh, live at three-eight-six River View Drive. Or, pardon me, Columbia Point Drive, and I used to be a Pasco resident, I was a resident for forty years until a few years ago. Um, so what I wanted to discuss was, um, the forty-one fifty, how, how you guys arrived at that? And I've known Daryl cuz I'm a farmer for a long, long time, he's done some great work. But it's not that I don't agree with these numbers, but I think that it should be. Um, you know, whatever, whatever the value of the water is, it should be put out on the market and the city should have first right of refusal. Whether it be. Twelve hundred dollars an acre foot or sixty-two hundred dollars an acre foot, I think that gives you the true price. And, you know, they're gonna go up and down, as far as that surcharge, I don't agree with it either and. The gentleman over there, they had an example, my example is, if you're gonna charge the developers. Why don't you go back and charge the, the water users? I mean, they're not gonna like that either and the line you talked about at the front of the door would be. Clear the courthouse, so those are the things that I wanted to address and if you have a committee, I think that's great. Um, but those should be in some cons- considerations, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, with that, again, just kind of recapping where we are, decision was made at the end of the year, um, to increase these rights, the, the cost of these rights. What I've heard from two council members is at least in advocacy for some sort of. Further committee work, something of that nature to review what was done, what was done. And, um, I don't know what the outcome of that is, uh, do we have any other council members who are in favor of that? I say this, if we have a majority who are in favor of some sort, sort of public-facing committee. With staff and some council members, uh, obviously less than a quorum. Uh, I'm amenable to that, uh, I don't intend to participate just to flat-out be there, um, if it'll make some other folks sleep better, I'll support that. Um, I do think, you know, there's a question on the surcharge that could be answered, um. As to the cost, I mean, it's slightly above the current price, uh, whether or not we have enough to limp along for a while, I don't know. Um, but anyway, I, I guess I'm asking council and pulsing if we've got more than. You know, if we've got four that are supportive of a, a committee or something of that nature, then let's hear that and kind of direct staff accordingly.
I'll support that.
I'll support that too. I would be on that committee, I'd be happy to or support it.
Then, uh, there's three, um, I'm, I'm happy, like I said, I, I unfortunately don't think I have the time to, uh, sit on that committee. I'm happy to support it, I don't think we need to, um. To what Mr. Harps said, we've given a lot of notice, given a lot of conversation about this. Uh, I anticipate or I would hope that we'd have a quick turnaround. On whatever external-facing meeting, maybe there's an internal-facing one to really develop what that strategy session looks like. And from there, you know, hopefully a quick turnaround of a meeting and then we go from there. Um, but realizing that the committee will come back or staff will come back with whatever the recommendation is and then. The action will ensue after that, uh, so. You know, just to be clear, it's, the committee will have a recommendation and council would have to adopt that and then we'd have to move on that. Um, so I think that sounds like where we are, any questions or comments from councilor staff? Yes, Mr. Ferguson?
Yeah, just real quick, it sounded like we were talking about four people getting together, no?
And we needed four to get there tonight.
Gotcha, okay.
And, uh, presumably, miss, or I heard two say they're available and one supported, I don't. Not gonna put Miss Blaze down on the spot, but at a minimum, we have two on bu- the bookends who, who are available and amenable to it.
Great.
Um, so yeah, like I said, we're not gonna hit a quorum on this one. Mr. Harps, I saw your mic flash, is it staying off?
Uh, I was just gonna mention, you said, um. A community to be formed and their, you know, kind of recommendation would have to be adopted. Um, I think you meant, you did, brought to a vote at a council meeting, I just wanna make that clarification for anybody that was confused.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm confused.
No, it, I mean, the committee would have a recommendation, it would be presented to council, council would have to then act on that. Either to accept it, modify it or stay as we are, and so we may end up with additional meetings staying where we are. So with that, um, we'll move on to item B of the agenda, the presentation of the Butterfield W T P Facility Plan Update. Water Quality Focus and, um, I failed to congratulate you on interim director status, uh. You know, thank you for taking the lion's share here, but, uh, interim director, Sarah.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna advance the slides. So, tonight we're pre- presenting to you the findings of our Butterfield Water Treatment Plant Facility Plan Update. So the city had performed through the work of Corolo Engineers and we have Ali Leeds here with us presenting. Um, a facility plan for our oldest and biggest water treatment plant, the Butterfield Water Treatment Plant Facility, it provides portable water. It's about thirty million gallons nominal capacity in that facility, so it's by far the biggest one we have, we have two. Um, in light, we had completed that, that facility plan in twenty-twenty-two and in light of changes in the water quality in the river. Uh, we decided it was prudent to go ahead and revisit that facility plan incorporating those changes in water quality. And identifying what changed and if anything, what should we do? In order to be prepared to continue to provide portable water, uh, with changing conditions in the river. Uh, with that, I will let Ali Leeds, the project manager for Corolo Engineers, make a presentation on this item. It's the new findings and the changes from the previous facility plan to the new facility plan. And, um, without getting ahead of myself, I will likely interject towards the end of the presentation to make some comments regarding the. Proposed ex- exp- um, accelerated, uh, capital improvement plan that is, you will see in the screen.
Okay. Thank you, um, can we bring up my presentation?
I think you can use the arrows to go forward and it should be cute. If not, I will help you from here, go, go one more.
Perfect, thanks, um, thank you very much, uh, as Mary mentioned, my name is Ali Leeds, I'm with Corolo Engineers. Um, we partnered with J U B to have a look at the Butterfield Water Treatment Plant, to conduct a facility plan for that treatment plant. And so I'm here tonight to speak to an update that we've done to that facility plan. Um, so I just wanted to start briefly with a recap, for those of you that weren't here previously when I was here presenting the facility plan. Um, that image in the lower right is the Butterfield Water Treatment Plant. And that is the largest water treatment plant for the city of Pasco by far, your primary source of drinking water. Um, the image on the left shows all the facilities associated with it, so the treatment plant, the main process is up there at the top. That image in the middle, there's some lagoons and then down at the bottom is the intake that's located on the Columbia River that brings the water into the treatment plant. And so when we started this facility planning process, we really set it up with, with a very structured process to, to explore where we needed to go. Um, and so this, the process outlined up here, but it really started with thinking about what performance requirements were needed for the treatment plant itself. Um, so what capacity did you need out of it, um, what water quality did it need to treat? And then we combined that with assessing what was out there right now, so we went out and did a deep dive into what does, what's the current state of the equipment and other infrastructure that's installed. Um, and then comparing those two items, where, where we need to go and where we are now, that helped us determine what improvements are needed long-term. And if there are any gaps in, in your treatment processes, for example, or, or other issues that need to be addressed. And so that gave us a list of projects then, that, that we know we needed to implement out of the treatment plant, and so we flowed that into our capital improvements plan for the treatment plant itself. And so what I've got up here was the results of that process, and so we previously, as previously presented to council, um, we established a phased replacement plan. So the idea being that we needed to do some additional infrastructure being built. But we wanted to phase that in over time, using as much of the existing infrastructure as we could as we went along. But not necessarily investing more in that existing infrastructure that was at the end of its life, you know, not, not putting. Significant sums of money into something that was going to be decommissioned within, say, the next five years or something in the near term. And so what we laid out was a series of projects and these were some slides from the, there are some images from the facility plan itself. Um, but these series of projects then we prioritized, I'm thinking about those that caused us issues that caused us the most concern, the pro- the projects that were addressing issues of the most concern. Um, and, and also then which ones, which projects would bring the biggest impact and biggest, biggest, um, benefits to the city. So we rolled out a series of, of prioritized projects. So on that backdrop then, we got through that process and then, as Maria mentioned, there were some events that happened the following summer. Um, and so I wanted to highlight or describe a couple of these, um, the first one being that, uh, during the summer of twenty-twenty-one, there were some. Uh, severe challenges with intake screen, intake screen cleaning. Um, so what you see in the image on the left up there is the intake down on the Columbia River. And what you can't see there below the water level is that there are some pipes that go out with some screens into the Columbia River. Um, and on those screens out there, during that summer of twenty-twenty-one, um, there was a, a bunch of aquatic plant material that came down the river. Or was continuously coming down the river and there is an automated cleaning system on those screens, but it just wasn't sufficient to be able to keep up with the material that was. Coming down the river at that point. Um, and the other portion was, and we've got a few images up here of the screens below the water surface, but. Um, during that summer, some plugging was noted and with some closer inspection, there were some freshwater sponges growing on the screen, so you can see the little white image up there at the top, so. In terms of, of seeing what that does, you can imagine trying to pull water in through those, they really block that, that being able to take water in. So this is an image of the screens, their automatic screen cleaning system currently, the screens cleaned by having compressed air that injects out periodically in a big burst. So this is just an image of the air bursting underwater. And so with the, you can see on that far left, you can imagine that air just wasn't quite sufficient to be able to push off what was on the screens itself. So operations staff, to keep the plant operational and keep water coming in. Hired divers to go out there, and so the divers went out and you can see it happened basically weekly, scrubbed off the screens manually to get what the. The components on the screens to keep the water coming into the facility plan all the way through the end of the summer. So kind of with that background and that series of events, uh, we said, well, we recommend that that be addressed. And we can replace that airburst system with a mechanical brush system. And that sort of system is what's currently installed at the West Pasco Treatment Plant, which is the newer treatment plant that Pasco has built. Uh, so that was one event that happened, um, the other event that happened, um, with cyanotoxins that were detected in the Columbia River. And so specifically antotoxin A was detected, and so just a little image of it there on the top left, but. It was detected at some recreational sites on the river itself, and so when it was detected, um, D O H, the Department of Health. Uh, came in and, and spoke to all the water purveyors in the area and did a comprehensive and coordinated sampling plan. Um, so they had all the water purveyors come in and sample in the river there at their intakes to see if they were experiencing or had cyanotoxins there. And the cyanotoxin that we're looking at is antotoxin A, and what you can see are there some levels that are shown up there. Uh, draw another line, health advisory level, this is based on an Ohio regulation because there isn't a regulation right now in, in the state of Washington, but. On a Ohio regulation, it's the level for sending, for going into treated water in the distribution system. So if I look at this, I can say, okay, the levels in the river were below that treated water level that we need to achieve. So the summary being, when we did the detections or when we got these detections, the concentrations were really low, but it was present. So understanding that there are perhaps now currently low concentrations that are there. Um, but needing to plan for the future, we wanted to ask, well, what can the Butterfield Water Treatment Plant do? And so we've got up here, we did a little bit of deeper dive into what the plant could treat and we looked at three specific cyan- And we looked at three specific cyanotoxins that are probably most likely to be regulated in the not-too-distant future. And what we found is the first two, antitoxin A and Sylentor Spermopsin, uh, the plant does have capability to treat some levels of those. So depending on the concentration that's in the river, uh, the plant can treat those uh, pretty well. And antitoxin A was the one that was found in the river in that summer. Um, the challenge was we identified that microsystems, the plant had very limited capability to be able to treat that. And so that wasn't detected in the summer of twenty twenty-one, but I'll note that in the past it has been detected um, in further out areas on the Columbia River. Um, it was the predominant cyanotoxin that was in the city of Salem's drinking water supply that, that contributed to the do-not-drink order. So it does occur regionally at least. And so understanding that this is where we are right now and we're doing this facility plan for the long term. We really wanted to look at what were some more comprehensive treatment tools? Where do we need to go in the future with it? And so after a screening process, we identified three technologies that we thought would made the most sense here. Um, we're gonna serve the city the best. And they were granular activated carbon, powder activated carbon and ozone. And we wanted to compare these and see if it may, which, which would be the technology that would make the most sense to take forward long-term. And so we compared them on some non-economic aspects, you know, like what maintenance um, impacts were gonna be or how complex it was. Um, we looked at uh, what sort of solids were coming out, if we use these or what needed to go in in terms of power or other chemicals. And we looked at when you're going to use it, like do you have to detect cyanotoxins and then you start using it? Or is it something that's always there and being used? And so piling on top of that uh, non-economic analysis, we also looked at the capital cost and the O and M costs of these and put those together to give you a net present value. And so ultimately, we found that in comparing those three technologies, the lowest net present value was arrived at with ozone. So the recommendation ultimately was that ozone be carried forward as the, the long-term treatment technology to be implemented to make sure that um, these cyanotoxins could be treated by the Butterfield Plant. So with those two projects we just talked about, or those two water quality events, we then went back to that capital improvement plan that we had previously developed in the facility plan. And I've listed the fifteen projects that we had in there up here. And what you can see is that, well, ozone was there on the list before, it was pretty far down on the list. We'd made that prioritization and we knew we wanted to move it up. In thinking about what that meant in terms of moving it up, we realized if we moved it up earlier, UV disinfection didn't need to be installed um, early to meet some of the needs. It actually, that disinfection property was being achieved by the ozone. So if we did it earlier, we didn't have to do this project anymore. And then the other piece that we did was we look at, looked at how we were phasing these and said, well, there's some, uh, certainly some benefit to the city. If rather than spread these out and do them as fifteen individual capital projects, can we bundle them into some bigger groups? That makes the overall total less expensive to the city, but it does create some larger lump sums. Um, when we were looking at that grouping into bigger groups and accelerated schedule, we found, well, so if we accelerate, we don't need to do the improvements to the existing facility to keep it operating. We're gonna accelerate the work and replace it before we have to do these improvements to keep the, the facility going along. So there are some benefits certainly on that accelerated side. Um, so ultimately, we rolled out an, a revised twenty-year capital improvement plan. Um, but it's now a little shorter because we took it on as, as being a bit more aggressive, accelerated schedule. So what you'll see is project four is no longer on that list. We've taken it off because we don't need to do that. We're going to build new infrastructure. Um, not need to repair the existing until we can build new. Um, we've taken off that UV disinfection because ozone is being done earlier. Um, on the ozone system, you'll see that it's still number eleven, but the dollar amount we moved over to short term. So it is happening earlier. We just left it in the same spot. And we added the intake screen replacement down there at the bottom, so to address those challenges of the screen. So with that revised kind of project list that's up there, um, the short-term value within, you know, the next one to five years, we're looking at about sixty-seven million dollars on that first group of projects with the accelerated schedule. Uh, we've got a mid-term group, which is five to ten years. Um, and the total on that down there in uh, twenty twenty-three dollars is about fifty million. And then more long-term projects that are beyond that ten-year window, um, with a total of about eighteen and a half million. And so that, that's on the accelerated side. I don't know, Maria, if you had, if you wanted to comment anymore on that.
Sure, thank you. So um, what you're seeing is the accelerated schedule, of course. Um, we have available to us a non-accelerated schedule where there is increased overall cost, but a lower immediate impact to um, our end balance or our bonding needs or loan needs. Um, again, the way to extend the timeline is to bring back some of those activities that repair, extend the lifetime of existing components and therefore delays implementation of some of these projects for a handful of years. Um, we thought it was important to show you what the recommendations were with the accelerated schedule. This is the most efficient way to accomplish the phase replacement of this facility and prepares us for dealing with the change in water quality in the river. Yet we want to assure you and the public that we are uh, working in uh, conjunction with finance department to ensure that we are not overstating our capacity to do this work. And that we're also pursuing funding opportunities to reduce the impact on rates. So this is the recommendation, yet I think a discussion on what gets implemented in our city capital improvement plan is yet to come.
And so with that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that, that you have on the update.
Thank you. Uh, it looks like Mister Harpser was first.
Yeah, thank you for that presentation. Um, I'll be honest, a lot of this is a little bit over my head. Um, and I'll prove that point by saying I've driven past Butterfield Plant several times, ridden my bike down the bike path and seen the lagoon and kind of outfall. And tonight when I saw the map, uh, or the exhibit previously this week in the agenda report, it kind of dawned on me, oh, that's all connected. Um, uh, one question for you, how often do you anticipate having um, similar or increased levels of the antitoxin like we had in summer of twenty-one?
Um, so, so I believe that DOH is doing a coordinated sampling effort um, ongoing for summers. But generally, we expect to see these levels with, you know, prom- promoting cyanotoxin blooms. Tend to be nutrient loading or temperatures in the water. So um, if water temperatures are increasing and you're getting increased development that does nutrient loading, we would expect that to trend upward as we go into the future. Uh, being a natural system thing, it, it's hard to predict an, an exact number. In fact, there's, there's groups that are definitely modeling that. But yeah, the trend would be upward.
Okay, then I think that answers my second question, which was a few slides back, it showed the levels in Richland dropped significantly over a period of time. Guessing that was just because of seasons changing and, okay.
So they, they do bloom seasonally generally or during warmer weather conditions. So we see an algal bloom season typically, that, that you have more of it than you would otherwise.
Okay. And then lastly, the projects on the left side of that chart, do we know what the costs were going to be for items four and, and seven?
We do have that information in the facility plan. I don't know it off the top of my head.
I don't need it now.
I do not know from the top of my head. I am looking at my senior engineer. She may have this information readily available here in the audience.
No problem.
Yes, she does. So may I introduce you, uh, Puna Clark? She is our senior engineer. I am missing those in this list. So I will circle back with those. Um, they were uh, in the millions of dollars, so. Just for, for reference. And then if I may add, actually, they're, they're aware cyanotoxins detected this last summer in twenty twenty-three and there were some temporary closures, so the river's short for uh, recreational activities. So we've seen this be a recurrent issue so far. There's only three years of it, but it, it's been recurrent.
Thank you. Uh, Mister Prowl.
Thank you. Oh, the only question I had was, um, are for those construction co- or were, were that on that table? Was that just construction costs or did that include design costs?
Uh, th- those were all in project costs.
Okay.
Mister Grim.
Yes, sir. Just you guys, thank you again for the presentation. I learned a lot, like I'm sure some of my other council members did. But um, I guess just thinking long-term, you know, this is here we are back again at water, just like that. And how, how important this is and everything. Um, looking at the list of improvements, the short-term, the midterm, the long-term. Um, you know, at some point, do we need to replace this whole facility? And what, um, you know, I saw you, you know, trying not to strand assets and other things like this. But um, you know, sixty-seven million dollars, you know, is that just a Band-Aid? Or, you know, is this, you know, really the best approach or what's our, you know, long-term goal on this?
Yeah, so, so in this case, when we started out the facility plan, we really looked and, and the staff, I think even asked, you know, well, so should we just go find another site and build it? You don't, we can't fit a new treatment plant on this site. But do you buy another site and, and you're tied to the intake because of the water rights? Issues that go along with that. So do you find another site suitable within that area and just build something new? Um, what you do end up with that is that capital cost of doing all those improvements all occurring at a single time. Like you can't build half a treatment plant and have it work. And so that really just didn't look to be feasible from a cash flow point of view. Um, it, it probably wasn't the total of all those numbers, but it certainly wasn't, wasn't far behind those numbers. You know, that it was a substantial dollar amount to do that. Um, so in terms of where we ended up with on the phase replacement, the infrastructure that you ultimately end up with af- at the end is all new. Um, when we did the facility plan, we explored, you know, looking at, do you continue to try and maybe Band-Aid um, some of the existing infrastructure and keep it limping along? And the answer was it, it had been done, that had been done for a long time, you know, maximizing the value of what you had available. But we reached the point where you were probably investing money in infrastructure that shouldn't be invested in anymore and it needed to be new. So you do end up with, with new facilities at the end that tie in. But the way we were able to spread out the cash flow over time was to tie it in with reusing some of the existing while you built some portions and then changed it out over time until all the infrastructure there was new.
Oh, that's very good. Yeah, being able to pay for it's one thing. So I guess just my follow-up question, how long will this last us then? I mean, is this something we're gonna turn around a decade and well?
Uh, I, I mean, I would expect that, that your life, your lifetime on treatment plants, this treatment plant was built in, I wanna say, the nineteen forties. So you're looking at, at treatment plant, the, the core one that is out there was nineteen forties. We say, you know, with, with ongoing maintenance and replacement of equipment, that probably your core concrete is, is eighty, a hundred years. So, so it's a significant time that, that the infrastructure that you're building now will last. You'll have to replace some of the equipment as you go along and upgrade certainly, but, but it's a long-term investment.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no additional mics here, I appreciate the presentation. And I appreciate the uh, effort that you all made to right-size this and to really look at this both down the road and currently. And it sounds like we've got some choices to make, but it sounds like staff and our consultants believe this is the right one. So thank you for your input. Uh, with no further comments, we're gonna move on to item C, ordinance, interim financing, local improvement district, sanitary sewer, east urban growth area. And that's going to come from Finance Director Buckley.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, uh, I do have a presentation related to a local improvement district that's been in process for some time and we're partway through. Um, and as part of that, um, I'll also introduce just the concept or what a local improvement district is in this presentation. So an LID or a local improvement district, um, they, the district is established uh, as a funding mechanism uh, for specific capital improvements that benefit uh, specific properties. Um, and there are some benefits in, in establishing a local uh, improvement district. They are, uh, it, it gives availability of lower interest rates. Uh, typically because the debt is city-financed, uh, as opposed to a private entity having to find financing. Um, and, and the repayment, once the LID is completed, is spread over many years so that it doesn't all have to be paid at one time. Um, assessments are assigned to the benefiting properties, um, so that they pay for the uh, capital cost and the utility as a whole doesn't pay for the capital cost. And then also all the property owners that are benefiting from that work are part of the assessment pool. So that everybody is paying back the cost of the improvements at the same time. Um, and one thing that an LID does provide is the city is prohibited from um, conferring benefits to private parties. And so um, it's right that the cost of the capital improvements when they are not widespread for a fundamental government purpose are paid by those property owners that benefit. Um, and so with an LID, uh, there's an opportunity to uh, provide a funding mechanism that's a little more palatable and easy for uh, developers to pay for. Um, and uh, it allows for the, um, there's no conflict with the prohibit, prohibition on gifting of government funds. Uh, the LID process is, uh, can be either city-initiated, um, or property owner-initiated. And um, before, I'm just gonna quickly walk through kind of a few pieces and parts of that. Pro- prior to formation of an LID area, um, a public hearing is held. Um, just to make sure that everyone that may be impacted gets an opportunity to hear the information and provide input. Um, and then based upon that input and dependent upon council's approval, um, with council's approval, an LID is formed by an ordinance. And the assessment of the cost, when we get all the way through um, completing the project and financing uh, is obtained, is um, assigned to the different properties in the LID area based on um, a couple, two options or a couple, two, two options. Either mathematically based on some measurement in the LID area, their front footage, um, potentially are most likely with it like road improvements or uh, square footage of a lot. Or they can uh, be assessed based on a special benefit analysis that is performed by uh, an appraiser. And um, that in that, uh, they can more carefully, the appraiser looks at what benefit does each um, given piece of property before and after, the value of the property before and after the improvements are made and then assign cost uh, to match that benefit. Uh, this slide has, it's a little hard to see, uh, because there are a lot of steps to a LID process. Um, and I won't work through all those, but we definitely wanted to include them in the presentation so that you could see. Uh, we are at the orange arrow, um, we have, the LID has been formed. Um, we've communicated with the property owners. Um, we are, design is complete, construction is ongoing and we are at the point now where we're ready to, uh, and the reason for me being before council is to um, issue interim financing. Uh, we will issue finance again, financing again at the end of the project. But right now, until all the costs are known, we, we issue interim financing. Um, and then based on getting finished, knowing what the final cost is, giving property owners an opportunity to um, have a thirty-day interest-free period should they want to pay the LID off. That if people do pay their LID off during that timeframe, we don't have to issue permanent financing. And so uh, we issue less debt and um, and we can right-size the issuance for a long-term repayment um, period. And so specifically tonight, the LID that we're discussing is the East UGA or Urban Growth Area Expansion Sewer LID. And the uh, L- this I LID includes twenty parcels and it covers approximately eleven hundred acres. Um, in that area, there is, there are plans for residential development. Uh, there are two significant projects, uh, excuse me, underway, which will be served by the sewer improvements. Um, and they are the Dairy Gold Fac- Gold Facility and also Pasco School District's newest high school that's being, is under construction. Um, when the LID was formed, no property owners contested the LID and all were also in favor of the LID. Um, there's a little distinction there because sometimes, well, when an LID is formed, um, you don't necessarily have to protest or say yes. But the only way you say no is if you protest or you vote to say no. So in this case, it's significant that all the pro- property owners were also in favor of the LID. Uh, the formation of the LID occurred in May of twenty twenty-two, so a little time has passed and uh, construction started in December of the same year. And then at this point in time, based on work between the Public Works Department and the Finance Department and our external team, which is a financial advisor, bond counsel and an under- underwriter, we're prepared and included in your packet is a draft ordinance for issuance, issuance of a bond anticipation note. Uh, included is a map of where the work is occurring, just so you can see it, uh, is, uh, primarily and, uh, uh, Mrs. Sarah would know better than I for sure, make sure I correct me if I'm wrong, but it's the green area, which runs along Road, North Road sixty-eight and then across Clark Road. And then kind of stair steps its way down and meets back up on Burns Road. Um, and then also that small section, or really it's not small, but I guess comparatively to the, to the green area, that gold area to the east, uh, northeast is, uh, Dairy Gold Site. So all that area are property own, are property area that will be served by this improvement. So the future steps at this point is I'm here to talk to you tonight a little bit that we will return next week looking for approval of the, uh, note ordinance. Um, the things that will occur, steps that occur after, upon that approval is we will meet with a rating agency, uh, that will, will talk about the project and the city and the utility. And then, uh, they will provide a rating to help us get the bonds sold, interim financing issued. Um, we anticipate that will happen about the first week of February at this point in time. And construction is planned or anticipated to occur, uh, be completed in September of twenty twenty-four. Uh, and then, then when we know that, we'll have final numbers, we'll come back to council, uh, we can, uh, calculate assessments and give, uh, property owners that opportunity to pay should they want to. Following that payment, uh, if we receive any, we can finalize, uh, assessment amounts, issue permanent bonds that will retire these, this debt issuance and, and then that will give them many years to make that, pay the bonds down. On and I, they do that one time a year, I should add to, um, it's an annual billing to spread the cost over, uh, ten to fifteen years, depending upon the, the bond. And then finally, in closing, um, as you can tell, there's lots of steps to the LID process. Um, and it does serve as a financing, financing tool to help getting that large construction project done. Um, and we're very thankful for the help of other departments and our external team and, and getting this far. And now I'll just open up the floor, should you have any questions.
Thank you, Director Buckley. Um, seeing that, can you slide back four slides, please?
Yeah.
It's the one right before the map. I just wanna highlight these, uh, two of these bottom four points, uh, which is the first to last, the LID was formed in May of twenty twenty-two. This is not a new LID. And, you know, I just, I'd sometimes folks will read or hear about this and be like, what's happening? Like, no, this, this happened.
Right.
Um, and the two above that, which is no property owners within the LID one-five-two contested this. And each property owner was in fact in favor of it. So just wanna make it clear to the public that what we're talking about is something we've adopted. We're moving forward with it and we're providing the next steps, which include a meeting to adopt, uh, you know, the actual resolution and provide financing mechanisms here in the near future. So just, just wanna be clear to the public, this isn't a new burden on you. Um, this one that's, that we've all discussed and adopted. If no additional comments from council seeing none, um, we'll slide on to item D, uh, unless, Director Buckley, you have.
Yeah.
I just saw your mic on, so I wanna make sure. Uh, item D, uh, which is amendment number five to RH two professional services agreement for the phase two of the PWRF project and we're gonna go back to the interim director, Sarah.
Thank you. We are presenting to you. We are presenting to you an amendment to a professional services agreement with RH two engineering. Um, we originally signed a professional services agreement with RH two to provide design services on the design of winter storage ponds, which is the PWRF Phase Two Project. You may have heard me talk about that before in other meetings. This is a massive project where we're building, uh, winter storage ponds in our industrial facility to store pretreated wastewater during the winter months. So that then that, uh, pretreated wastewater can be land-applied for final treatment and disposal. Uh, this project is in construction currently. And, uh, prior amendments of that professional services agreement have allowed us to perform, uh, funding required activities for environmental permitting, purchase of land from a federal government. Um, they have supported changes in the scope of the project such as, uh, having additional winter storage needed based on projections that change from our processors to us as how much water needed to be stored during the winter based on their increased projection, new plans coming on board and so on. And this amendment that we are presenting to you today is re- is really to support us through the construction management. Originally, we had limited services during construction included in the last amendment, mostly focusing on activities related to geotechnical, um, uh, compliance with, with rules for dam safety. Because this project, um, in the eyes of ecology is regulated as a dam. Each of those ponds and bunkers are ponds, are, uh, dams. So therefore, we had some limited services included in the project, um, scope for RH to support us. And now understanding this project has received federal funding through ecology. The total award of federal funds is in the order of fifty-two million. We are only needing thirty-eight million dollars for this project, bets were really good. Um, we have determined that the requirements for compliance with that funding surpassed our capacity for our staff. We have two inspectors currently in our team. So, uh, with a lot of projects happening, this project required a lot more attention than we could adequately provide. Therefore, we ask RH to provide scope services to support us and do full construction administration, observation, reporting and so on. While I'm talking, I would like to take the opportunity to show you, and I hope this works, a very recent, um, drone flyover, which PD was kind enough to do for us for our project. And you'll start seeing some of the earth movement and, uh, you're, you're seeing some equipment there already and you can see the magnitude of the work that, uh, we are doing currently in the site. Um, the proposed amendment is for one point three million dollars, just over that and rounding those numbers. Uh, and I could again provide for full services during construction from RH two so that we can ensure compliance with funding, environmental requirements, all observation, all documentation and reporting. And here you're seeing some of our earth movement activities. We're, uh, disposing of some dirt where we're digging for those ponds. Right now, the camera is showing you, uh, the phase three project, which is not the project we're talking about, but it's right in between the two sites. Um, this is where the actual treatment will happen for that wastewater. And now, very soon, we're getting to the location where three ponds will be built. These are hundred million gallon ponds, so they're very big. And you can see how much activity is occurring there and all the equipment looks very small from the air, but it's actually quite enormous. These are eighty acres of excavation that we're working on. And so today, we're just presenting you with this item and hoping that we are allowed to bring it back next week for approval.
Thank you. Uh, it looks like Mr. Grimm, you got your mic on.
I just wanna say super exciting, yes, you know, they, obviously there's no irrigation over the winter, we have to store it. I mean, without getting into the nuts and bolts of it, I'm sure they planned for seepage into the ground to where we don't lose all that water. But, you know, we just, we take water up here for granted with that mighty creek that rolls down next to us. But yet we have to be really concerned about being good stewards of it. So, yeah, this is a good step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peralis.
Yeah, the only question I had was, so the thirty-eight million, that's construction plus with the new total of the PSA. Is that what that is?
That is total cost, so includes all design, all right-of-way acquisition, so land acquisition that was performed is the overall cost for the project.
Uh, I do have one question, seeing no other mics. I heard you say fifty-two million was what we were awarded by ecology. So fundamentally, we've been awarded at least a hundred percent barring some crazy, crazy, crazy cost overruns, which, uh, might change your title from interim director to something else. I'm teasing, I'm teasing. Um, but yeah, I mean, that's, that's exciting that we've got, you know, it sounds like a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty percent of, of the funding ready. And so that's great.
Yes, that is correct. The additional funding that is not needed for this project, we are working with ecology to reallocate it with a companion project to this that is already underway so that, uh, there were remains with City of Pasco.
Excellent. Well, I, I trust that you'll spend it wisely. Please take my jest as exactly that. Um, with no further comments, we'll move on to item E, resolution, change order. Number seven to citywide traffic signal improvements phase two project. And I'm guessing that's you, not Mr. Worley, unless he's joining us remotely.
This is me, it's my night. So we are presenting to you change order number seven for citywide traffic signal improvements phase two. This project was originally, uh, started as a single-phase project in two thousand thirteen and, uh, was later phased, although most of the design occurred in the early years, so between two thousand thirteen and two thousand sixteen. Um, the change order we are presenting to you is for a total of twenty thousand dollars. Yet because we had signed, approved, uh, with delegated authority prior change orders, six of them. Um, we have surpassed the delegated authority, so we're now surpassing the, just over the three hundred thousand limit. With that, uh, I wanted to bring to your attention, let's see what I can show you, I have some construction pictures here of the type of work that is happening. We saw at the very first slide, the different locations of these intersections that are being upgraded. The project focuses on signal equipment upgrades, yet ADA compliance, uh, improvements of ramps and perrams and sidewalk improvements are triggered by this scope of work. This project is federally funded and therefore, um, what we found was some change conditions in the field as we advanced our construction in twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty-two, we've been, uh, very long lead items for all electrical signal equipment. So, uh, some of the flat work has occurred and we are still waiting for some equipment to be received. Um, while we don't foresee any more change orders, you know, change orders that could occur. Um, but we have now finished all the work that had to do with excavation, which is typically where we find surprises. And with that, the change order specific, uh, subject to approval today has to do with, um, the intersection of Tenth and Sylvester, where after, um, the improvements were being, um, started, we identified that there were areas beyond the scope of the original project that had issues with flooding. And we see a picture in the screen with that occurring. Therefore, we extended the limits of pavement replacement in order to alleviate that flooding and ensure that we had a safe, um, dry, uh, crossing location for pedestrians. And, uh, the cost for that extended pavement replacement and regrading of that area is the twenty thousand dollars we are asking for approval tonight. And with that, I will be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Seeing, uh, no comments, uh, thank you for that. We look forward to seeing that next week. With that, we'll move on to item number six, miscellaneous discussion, Mr. Lincoln.
Just a couple of updates, uh, with the weather change. So, uh, first, uh, Ms. Sarah has an update on snow and ice control and then, uh, Mr. Rice has an update as well. I know, that's a shocker for her.
Well, with snow and ice, uh, in the forecast, we are ready to, um, manage the roads. Currently, our crews set prepare to, uh, begin, begin work as soon as we have some accumulation of snow should, that occur. Um, it is important to note that there is six hundred lane miles of roads that City of Pasco crews maintain. And, um, there is a priority for how those get cleaned up and any information are, uh, here for all council. And the public is available in our website for maps of that priority in which roads will be tackled for cleanup. And then along with that, um, just a reminder for the residents of their responsibility on clear all pedestrian passes, passes or path for pedestrians in their sidewalks. So cleaning of those sidewalks is, uh, upon the residents that live adjacent to those sidewalks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thought I'd try a different area, sit in the audience and next week I might swap with one of you, so we'll see how that works out. Um, actually, I'm here to do things this evening to follow up the Ms. Sarah. Um, the Parks and, uh, Facilities crew is ready for the cold weather. They said they're excited for it, so they are ready to handle that. Um, but more importantly, I wanna talk about that the Tri-Cities region, um, Pasco, Kennewick and Richland, as well as Prosser and some additional locations do have some temporary warming centers that they've set up. Uh, Benton Franklin Health Departments helps, uh, run and maintain these locations. But, uh, in Pasco, we have our Tri-City Union Gospel Mission, uh, Mid-Columbia Libraries, our Owen First Avenue Center and Mid-Columbia Libraries out in West Pasco. But for those interested in warming centers, there is a document that you can find out on the Benton Franklin Health Department website. We posted it to our social media accounts as well. And again, we'll have our First Avenue Center open during our regular business hours, eight to five, for those warming stations should they be needed in any cold weather.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing nothing else from Mr. Lincoln, I see Mr. Peralis and that's it, um, it's Mr. Peralis.
Okay, perfect. Miscellaneous, right?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I just had, uh, two things. I said two things, um, again, seeing a lot of, um, chatter on couples, Facebook, Nextdoor, fireworks. People are still complaining about people lighting them off. Um, I mean, I guess people are just asking me straight up, are we gonna write tickets for people? Uh, what's the best course of action? Should people just call the police department, have people, um, tell them where the locations are and come out and, and stuff like that? Cause I, you know, I, I see a lot of it and I'm getting badgered. So not badgered by it, but I'm, it's brought, being brought to my attention in my neighborhood at least.
Yeah, thank you, Council. Uh, as always, they need to call us so we can get up in those areas, look for them. Um, they are a difficult, um, piece of enforcement because they're up, gone and people are gone. But that doesn't mean that we don't want to know about them and that way, uh, a couple of things, we can, we can then track how many of these are actually coming in, uh, for complaints versus just people that happen to be emailing you or something. Are, is it an actual number of concern? Then do we need to take a different approach for enforcement, for example? So please absolutely call in, let us get up there and, and attempt to educate and enforce as we can.
Okay, and the last thing was, um, we did have an email. Um, I would like to see an update on where we're, or where, where are we at with the planning efforts for Cinco de Mayo? Um, we get in some emails about just planning efforts and, um, working with, um, non-city organizations. So, uh, if we could see like an update, maybe at one of those council meetings or right now, that'd be great.
If, uh, Director Rice has an update.
I'm gonna welcome myself back, welcome back. Um, so yes, uh, staff have our initial planning meeting for Cinco de Mayo slated for this week. And I think as we discussed before, you may be aware, we use a fairly large internal committee to start. It includes members from a lot of the departments, communications, public works, planning code enforcement, uh, police and fire. So that'll be our initial meeting where we start doing our planning, um, and determine which path, uh, we're gonna move forward. Um, we have offered to reach out to some of those invested community members. You may have heard about in several emails that have been submitted, so we will reach out to them and see what their interest is and what input they may have to help share with those. So, um, generally, since this, um, you know, we're getting into the new year, we are gonna be doing some rapid planning in order to secure some things before we run out of time on those. So probably making pretty fast progress, but once the initial planning is done, it'll just be works in regular meetings. Whether those are weekly or monthly leading up to the event.
Thank you. Uh, seeing no additional comment from Council. Now, I, I will note, Mr. Peralis, I believe our ordinance allows for fireworks both on Fourth of July and New Year's. So to the extent that those concerns were within, I believe, a four-day window, uh, that may be something that, you know, is worth noting to those folks now. I, I do know there are times where it's not that, that. You know, is worth noting to those folks now. I, I do know there are times where it's not that, that I hear them too in my neighborhood, so. Um, with that, I see no additional comments from staff and no need for an executive session and with that.
Actually, we have a need for an executive session, sorry.
Uh, can you tell me what it?
Real estate.
What's the section, the code section?
Uh, RCW uh forty two thirty one ten uh should be F.
F.
Or E, let's take a peek real quick.
Yeah.
Let's go.
Yeah, apologies for not having that on the agenda.
Well, yeah, I mean.
Are we, uh, city owned that's selling?
Yeah.
Okay, so consideration minimum offering price would be D, uh, and we need to uh state the factors uh prior to going in.
Should be the uh location, the cost and the use.
Yeah, uh, so we are, how, how long?
Uh, five minutes.
We are, huh, uh, yeah, okay, so before we get there, we're going to take a five minute break. Uh, but we do need an executive session under RCW forty two thirty.
Forty two thirty one ten.
Forty two thirty one ten.
One D.
Subsection one, subsection D, discussing uh real estate sales and the factors are. Uh, price, use.
Land use and location.
Price, land use and location. So we're going to take a break from eight fifty one to eight fifty six and then. We get, okay, all right, then we'll, um, so we'll make it eight fifty two to eight fifty seven, then May fifty seven to nine oh two will be an executive session. Thank you. So it is nine oh seven and we have completed our executive session. With that, we are adjourned for the evening. Thank you for joining us.